Good evening, everyone. Call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday evening, December 20th, 2021. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have 14 items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council meeting, December 6th, 2021.
Counselor Tenera.
Thank you, Mr. President. Accept and place on file.
Motion been made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, filed 11-0. Agenda item number two.
From City Council President Osing, an update from Mayor Vigent regarding COVID-19.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, obviously, there's no surprise that we've seen an uptick in Marlboro as well as everywhere else in our COVID numbers. We're up to 204 active cases. The good news is it actually came down the last couple of days, but we are seeing substantial number increase. But keep in mind, again, 204 is based on 41,000 people, so that's good news, I guess. We're right now running about 5.69% positivity rate average over the last 14 days. We're up to 10 cases in the Marlboro Hospital, and two of those are breakthrough cases. They are making changes up the hospital, so there are no more visitors up there. They're going back to some of their other protocols to try to keep their numbers down, so if you are planning on going up to visit somebody, please call the hospital first or have them double-check that, because they probably won't let you in. The schools right now, we have 67 cases. Obviously, a lot of activity in the schools, and we've been keeping an eye on it. Kids have been testing daily to stay in school if they've come across some other children that have had been tested positive. Vaccination rates, as of Thursday, we had 85% of the city with one dose, 75% of the city fully vaccinated. We're up to 28% of our 5- and 11-year through 11-year-olds that have one dose, and we're up to 13% of them that are fully vaccinated. And I mentioned the 20- to 29-year-olds, and Counselor Pearlman is going to help me with this group, I'm sure. But right now, if we just take a look at them, they're running about 78% with one dose and 68% fully vaccinated. The next closest age group, taking them out of the picture, is 80% fully vaccinated. So there's a pretty big gap between the two, so we've got to push those kids that are 20 to 29, and like I said, we're coming along with the 5- to 11-year-olds. We have a number of clinics lined up in the next few weeks. This week, on the 22nd, we're going back into the schools that were already registered for their second dose. When they got them a few weeks ago, they registered right away for the second dose, and we're doing those on the 22nd. On January 5th, we'll have a vaccination clinic up at Jericho that is on the website. You have to register for that, so you have to preregister to get up there. We're actually doing a joint one with the Bethel Presbyterian Church on the 12th of January, and that one, we're going to try to do, they're going to put it on their website first, the church's website, and then after a couple of days, we'll be putting it on our website. So we're trying to do that to encourage some of the other groups to get vaccinated. And then we're going to start doing various restaurants again in January, trying something a little bit different. We're going to do clinics right at the restaurants. DPH has awarded the city $51,000 in additional help for paying for some of this, so that's good news also. And with that, Mr. President, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Orm.
Thank you, Mr. President. I read in the November 23rd School Committee meeting minutes that they had the clinic you mentioned.
Yeah.
Some did not show, and did they have that clinic yet, the second clinic, to catch the ones that weren't able to show the first time?
Well, we have a second clinic, if I'm getting, the second clinic is the 22nd.
Okay, it's, I can find it.
It's this week.
It just says, December 11th, they were going to have the makeup for the people that were supposed to be there on the first one.
Yeah.
Mostly everyone showed.
We've been doing regular clinics up there. I think this will be our fourth or fifth clinic.
Oh, okay, so it's not like you just had that one, you've had others.
No, no, no.
Good, good.
This is probably the fourth or fifth different clinic that we've done up at the schools.
That's good to hear. I wasn't sure from reading the minutes. The other note in the minutes was the superintendent mentioned that the expiration for mask use is planned for January 15th.
Right.
I'm sure there's going to be some discussion on that prior. You're waiting for the state, I'm sure, to direct you on that as well.
Well, the 15th was a state date.
Yes.
We were hoping to move forward at that point before the big uptick, but we have a meeting on, I believe, the 11th of January, and it was discussed at that meeting that we'll be discussing the masks on the 11th.
Okay, good, and we'll wait for your updates. And again, I thank you for coming here, giving us the updates.
Hopefully, I don't have to do it much longer, but I've got a feeling it's going to be for a while.
Unfortunately, reality has reached us on not just this local issue, but this national, worldwide issue. In Marlboro, though, I noticed our transmission scale. I don't know if you've seen the charts. Thanks to the Board of Health, they do post this every, almost twice a week, the statistics on what's happening. Our transmission scale is in the red, which means the highest it can be.
Yeah.
So we have to be aware of that. That's why I'm hoping, as we heard, I don't know how many counselors saw the news today, but Mayor Michelle Wu made a great stand, in my view, as a public health expert in what she did. I know there's going to be retribution, but not from everyone, and I hope Marlboro will look at what their scientists, their public health people, their doctors, their legal have done, and maybe consider it. So, Mr. Mayor, I offer my help to you on that, and we may not have to reinvent much of it. You know, if there's a legal challenge, I'm sure the Boston lawyers have looked at it. So, again, this is real. This is really happening. It didn't go away. That's unfortunate. Many people, including in this room, have made great strides to get us in the right direction, but we're still not there. So anything we can do in the city to save one life would be more than sufficient, in my view, to follow protocol that will help prevent the spread, and I hope my fellow counselors feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Any more? Counselor Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Threw you to the mayor. Mayor, thank you for coming down for an update. Just question about the testing that's moved over to the Sports Center.
Yeah.
One, have you been getting numbers about how many testing, how many people are going through a day? I know with the holidays, people are going to try and probably get over there in advance. And then, two, any news on how long the state's going to keep stop the spread open?
No, they keep extending it, and we would anticipate they're going to extend it again. The numbers up at the Sports Center, I haven't received them in the last few days since they jumped over last Wednesday. They were up to over 600 a day at the hospital before they moved, so we're figuring it's going to be pretty high, and especially with everyone doing traveling this week and next week. So if you're going down to the Sports Center, it goes quick, but you're going to be there a while.
And currently, the stop the spread is, has been extended until what date?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
What, stop the spread is now authorized until which date? Is it still the 31st of December, or is it?
31st of March.
31st of March. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. We'll move on with Agenda Item Number Three.
Now is the time for the continued public hearing on the petition for Massachusetts Electric and Verizon New England to install two new poles, P-651 and P-65 on Bartlett Street, Order Number 21-100-8454A. In addition, there's a communication from City Engineer Thomas De Persio regarding recommended conditions for the petition for Massachusetts Electric and Verizon New England on Bartlett Street.
Thank you. This public hearing will be conducted in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the city councilors. I'll ask any members of the public speaking to please state their name and address. We'll open the public hearing with public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Mike?
Michael Fraser, National Grid, 245 South Main Street, Hoptown. Petitioning to install polls 6-5 and 6-51 for a new service at 73 Bartlett Street in Marlboro.
Well said.
Yep.
Anyone else? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none. I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? No questions from the public? I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none. We'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors. Any questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none. Oh, Counselor Landers.
Thank you. Just quickly, Mr. President, I am going to move to give a report, under reports, and perhaps, as I mentioned at the last meeting, if everything goes well and we have, it's obvious we have no comments here, and see how the council feels, that perhaps we'd come up with a vote tonight. So that will be under reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Landers. Any other comments or questions from the councilors? Comments or questions from the councilors? Comments or questions from the councilors? Hearing none. I close that portion of the public hearing and the prior public hearing, and it is in public service. Thank you very much, Mike. Agenda item number four.
Communication from the mayor regarding acceptance of Federal Coronavirus Relief Fund CARES Act in the amount of $3,511,279 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that were used to cover all costs associated with the Board of Health, PPE supplies, unemployment claims, HVAC, and cleaning of city buildings from March 1, 2020 through October 29, 2021.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, the grant's approved, 11-0. Agenda item number five.
Communication from the mayor regarding acceptance of Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Package in the amount of $11,835,814 through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question. I know we received the letter from the mayor regarding this going towards investment in water and sewer. Will we be getting more specifics about that in the future, or what is sort of the status? We approved the grant, and then what would come next, so that we were aware of what it's being used for?
Yep. It's my, may I correct me if I say something that's not correct, but the plan is for, where this money can be spent is very limited. Broadband, water, sewer, and the mayor, when they decide what they want to do, will come down for us and let us know what projects that the mayor intends to work with the DPW to spend on, and then we'll get a shot at saying, so if you have a water or sewer project you want, let the mayor know.
Okay, no, I was just curious if there was going to be another step, since this is the ARPA funding, so.
This is just approved now, but he'll come down to see us with what the, how the money will be spent.
Okay, thank you, and I look forward to hearing that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Counselor Orm.
What brought to mind, and I don't want to steal Counselor Doucette's idea, but it would be nice to see if we have any capacity to test our sewage for the virus, as other towns are doing. It's a great tool. Counselor Doucette brought this up previously. I'd suggest at least keep that in mind to the mayor, that we consider the cost of that and what it would, it's a benefit to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Orm. Anyone else? On the, Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just to explain a bit more of what Counselor Orm was talking about, basically, there's a startup from MIT that basically samples sewer water for sewage. Boston has been doing it daily since this started, really got this business started, but I see that as a baseline we can compare against, so it'd be beneficial for us to do our own testing. We don't need to test it more than maybe once, twice a week. We've got two sewer plants to test, and before tests, it's like $350 a test, so reasonably inexpensive and just gets us there. But, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Doucette. Anyone else? Hearing none on the motion to approve the grant. All those in favor? Opposed is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number six.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $2,000 from the Cummings Community Giving Program, in the names of employees Michael Burnell and Paul Bracken of New Horizons, ordered to the Police Department to be used for community outreach programs.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to Michael Burnell and Paul Bracken for the most generous gift. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding request that the council consider a proposed zoning change regarding a portion of Jefferson Street.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to refer this to Urban Affairs and to carry it over to the next legislative session.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee and carry it over to the 2022-2023 Legislative Session. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Dumet.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to where this location is, I will need to recuse myself due to family residential property that buffer. Thank you.
Understand, we'll have the record reflect that you will be recused. Any discussion? Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Should we be advertising this?
I'll ask the chair if she wants it advertised.
At this point, I do not want it advertised.
Wait until it gets the better wording?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
On the motion to refer to Urban Affairs and carry over to 2022-2023 Legislative Session, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, approved, 10-0, one abstain. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding the proposed master concept plan and development agreement with BH Group TCAM owner for the campus at Marlboro within the resultsway mixed-use ovalade district, sub-district 2, in proper legal form, Order Number 21-100-8404.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point, I would like to ask for suspension to accept a communication from Attorney Tam.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules for accept the communication. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, suspension carries, 11-0. Counselor Roby.
Thank you. Is it appropriate to have the clerk read the letter, or should I just move?
Excuse me. Address to the Marlboro City Council regarding the master concept plan and development agreement for the campus at Marlboro, Simirano Drive and Martin Angelo Drive, Marlboro, Mass. Dear President Osing and councilors, on behalf of Greatland Realty Partners, we appreciate the council's efforts in helping advance the mixed-use master plan for the campus at Marlboro. While significant progress has already been made to reposition the property, we understand that at present, some concerns remain regarding the phasing of project elements contemplated in the master concept plan and draft development agreement pending before the council. In order to effectively address these concerns, we support the council returning this matter to the Urban Affairs Committee for further consideration. With construction activities presently underway on the site and in the context of a dynamic development environment, such a pause will allow for review of any new information or change circumstances in the new year. Thank you very, truly yours, Peter Tam.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to accept and place on file the communication and move to refer the development and master concept plan back to Urban Affairs and to hold it over for the next legislative session.
Okay, so there's a motion to accept and place on file the communication from the campus folks, motion to refer back to Urban Affairs, and a motion to carry over to the 2022-2023 Legislative Session. I get them all? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those, Counselor Landers.
I know, Mr. President, I'll have a high time voting for that. I have a feeling that, I think, the Urban Committee did a pretty good job. We voted 5-0, and I'm not sure if I'm crazy about a lawyer, you know, kind of telling us, unless he knows something we don't know, telling us, you know, what to do. I was hoping, quite honestly, being on Urban, that, you know, we'd move forward on this, and I thought we'd have, I say, I don't see the value of going back to Urban. We had some good Urban meetings. Most of you people were there. It was a 5-0 vote, and are we going to let a lawyer tell us what to do? Huh? I hope that isn't the start of the 22-23 season. So let's have some discussion. Am I the only one that doesn't mind this kicking back to Urban? But I don't know what it's going to do. I don't think Urban's going to probably change a heck of a lot. We do have, we do have one change on the City Council coming up, but, you know, we had this discussion at the last meeting, but, I don't know, you people that are going to vote to send it back to Urban, I'd like to know tonight, you know, what it's going to do by sending it back to Urban. Probably the same people will be involved, and some of you people that would probably vote to send it back to Urban voted 5-0 to begin with, so let's have a little discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Counselor Dumet.
I'll respond to that. So I think the idea behind to go back, for me to go back to Urban, it's not the lawyer telling us what to do. I think that if we were to vote on this tonight, the project would not be approved. So my thought process, and maybe others would agree or disagree, during Urban Affairs, we invite the developer to come in, we have a healthy discussion. If we were to do it with just the 11 of us, we're doing negotiations without a key person at the negotiation table, which would be the developer. Things were done behind the scenes in communication with the developer. I personally don't like that. I would rather have full transparency, so the people and the residents of Marlboro can actually witness what's being discussed with not only us, but also the developer. If we were to vote here tonight with just the 11 of us, the developer will not be able to have their chance to speak, or their discussion will not be heard by the residents of Marlboro. If we brought it back to Urban, it's televised, people have access to it, they know it's being discussed, and it can be a healthy dialogue, so that way the project can move forward with what the developer can actually accomplish and what they can't accomplish based upon our vote. So that's why I prefer, from the get-go, to go back to Urban Affairs, and I'm glad that hopefully everyone else at this chamber will be able to see that and bring it back to Urban, so that healthy dialogue can be discussed with the developer. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Landers.
I don't want to prolong this, Mr. President, but, you know, there's a contradiction there. Basically, more people watch the City Council meetings than they do the subcommittee meetings. I think we all have to agree on that, and at the last meeting, I think that's what we brought up. Basically, you have five members of Urban, and they do most of, they get called on first, they do most of the talking, but you can get, the rest of you people can get called on, but the contradiction here is that televised City Council meetings, people follow that a lot more than they do the subcommittee meetings. So here again, I'm not so sure why we don't have the discussion tonight. That's what I thought we left at the last meeting at, then all of a sudden, you know, we have a motion to send it back. I don't know what, what's the conversation? What's, how's it going to be different than it was? Like, and you mentioned something about behind the scenes. I was no part of anything behind the scenes. I don't know who would be, or why they would be. So I think, let's discuss it tonight. That's what I think. Sorry, Mr. President.
No, that's okay. Anyone else? On the motion, Counselor Doucette.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So I'm the one that motioned it to come out of committee, and probably one of the few votes I actually regretted, because I didn't think it was ready yet. And I think in the prior discussion we had in our last meeting, the issue was really, you know, what do we do about the affordable housing, which is what the mayor proposed, and how do we want to basically have it so the development for the office area is, you know, at some point further along before the housing goes in? So the housing doesn't go in first, but there's some development for the office complex first. I mean, that, that seems to be what was coming out of the last meeting that we were at, and we're, if we were going to cover that tonight, then there would be proposals on the floor to actually make the changes, and then everything would have to be lined up for it, which, yeah, we could do that tonight, we'd be in a lot longer than what a normal meeting would be. But I think that by sending it to Urban Affairs, we can address those issues within Urban Affairs. I think I'm much more prepared to address those issues now than I was when we had the meetings in Urban Affairs, I can assure you that. So I think that overall, you know, the note that we got from the developer is basically saying, he's cool with that. If we need to send it back to Urban, it's okay, you know? So I see that more of a, he's amendable to that, versus if we got another hypothetical letter from the same developer saying, oh, I really want this thing to be closed this year and get a vote done this year. No, he's willing to work with us on this, and I see that as being a good opportunity. So we have our conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Doucette. Anyone else? Anyone else? Counselor Wagner.
Thank you. I see the both sides of this, but I am concerned, I think it's an excellent project, and I'm concerned in some of the comments that were made, that there's hesitation about supporting this, and that, I agree with Counselor Dumet, that I'd like to have the conversation again. I think there's benefit to having the developer here, so some of the questions can be asked with them present, because there's things I took away, how I understand it, and some of my fellow counselors have had a different response, and we can argue with, no, this is how I understood it, and this is how you understood it, but without the developer here to say, no, this is exactly our plan, I think there's an advantage to having them in the room, rather than go down that path of maybe possibly misunderstanding next step. So I welcome the opportunity to go back, revisit some of the areas of concern, the benefits of how it's, potentially how it's scheduled, and being able to have that conversation with them in the room. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Landers.
This will be the last time. I hate to see the delay. I guess, you know, I won't vote, I won't vote to send it back to Urban. I maybe would vote to put it on the agenda of the next council meeting and have the discussion here. I want all 11 people to be at that meeting, not just the five and then the six that can participate. Okay, the other thing is, this is what we have to be careful of, let's watch what the message is out there. Delays are dangerous, and people are probably scratching their head, why are they delaying a project like this? Because they're afraid of 100 units of housing? Or they're afraid of this? I guess what we got to do is, we go back to Urban, we, all our subcommittee meetings, that when we vote for something there, you know, we know what the hell we're voting on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Landers. Counselor Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Landers in so much as I also want to see all 11 people at the meeting that gets discussed, so I would ask all 11 counselors, the six who are not voting members of Urban, to attend that meeting. It does appear that we may be headed in that direction. You know, I think, you know, it's true, this can send a message, and, you know, people are often concerned about what we're saying to the business community, what we're saying to developers who want to come in here. I think this is exactly the message that we want to start sending to people, which is, we take this seriously, we find good projects, we work with developers, and we make sure that we get it right. This is a project that I have said from the beginning, I support, I supported the zoning, I've had concerns about it, as far as the development agreement is concerned, and the reason I do is because the city has a great opportunity to make sure that we come out ahead, and at the same time, it won't be at the cost of the developer. I do not think we're there yet. I do not think we're there yet. I think, you know, if we were gonna vote on this tonight, I was going to suggest some amendments, Council Dusset alluded to them, that would say that the one commercial building should proceed at the same time as the residential. The developer has a great opportunity from a business standpoint, the city has a great opportunity, we constantly talk about, we need new growth. We have heard a couple of times throughout this session that we have not approved a whole lot of projects. That's okay. But we have the opportunity to sit here and talk about how we can get new growth, how the city can benefit both from a commercial tax base and still allow a small amount of housing. We're not there yet. I will be supporting sending this to Urban tonight, and I hope that everybody attends for the discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? On the motion to refer back to the Urban Affairs Committee, all those in favor of sending it back to Urban Affairs, please signify. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eight, nine, nine in favor, two opposed. It is referred back to Urban Affairs and carried over. Counselor Roby.
I'm sorry?
And carried over.
And carry over, yes.
Motion made and seconded, carry over and refer back to Urban Affairs, a nine-two vote. Agenda item number... Nine? Nine, okay, just checking.
Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding request for approval of a flat wall sign, Bay State Physical Therapy at 771 Boston Post Road, within, Boston Post Road East, excuse me, within the Wayside District.
Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is another one, the reason it is here is because it's a sign within the Wayside District where they're asking to have it internally illuminated. Unless there's an objection from anybody, I'm going to move to approve this tonight.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sign request. Any discussion on the motion? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is in my ward, I know the development well, and I welcome the new business, and I think that there is no reason, based upon the sign design, it fits the rest of the development, so it's a, it's a good fit. It's not anything apparent or anything, so absolutely support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Council...
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
On the motion to approve the sign request, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, PIRAC, regarding the required fiscal '23 appropriation of the amount of $10,275,549.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the communication, please.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file, and I will point out to the counselors that this is the starting of the fiscal year '23 budget process with an increase of $750,000. All right? So last year's was level funded, we are now up $750,000, just so that everybody's on the same page. On the motion to accept and place on file, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approv, accepted and placed on file. Agenda item number 11.
Communication from Attorney Brian Falk regarding request to carry over to the 2022-2023 session, site plan application for Abishon Realty Company, Inc., 661 Boston Post Road East, order number 21-100-8418.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communication, and to add this to the list of items to be carried over to the 2022-23 session.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file as well as carry over to the 2022-2023 legislative session. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number 12.
Communication from Attorney Brian Falk regarding request to carry over to the 2022-2023 session, application for special permit by J&amp;D Landscape Contractors, 101 Airport Boulevard, order number 21-100-8441A.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communication, and to carry over to the 2022-23 session.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication and carry over to the 2022-2023 legislative session. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11-0. Agenda item 13.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Mr. President.
Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, they are filed. Agenda item 14. Claims. Mr. President? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to submit the claims to the legal department.
Motion made and seconded to send the claims to the legal department, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, they are sent to the legal department, 11-0. Reports of committees. Oh, you wanna hear it from me again? I wanna hear from you. Counsel Landers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned a couple of times, I am gonna ask for a suspension of the rules so we can discuss and talk and vote on, on placement of those two poles out on Bartlett Street. So that's order number 211008454, and that's a petition from Mass Electric in Verizon to install two poles, P6-51, P6-5. If you recall, we didn't have the public hearing a few weeks ago because I think it was a stormy night and the wind and rain, the National Grid people figured they'd better be on duty. But I would like to move forward on this, because this particular project is two poles, but there's no digging up the street, no digging up the sidewalk, and they're needed out there. It was at 71 Bartlett Street, there's a couple of big buildings there. So we did have a, a meeting of public services, and I did have the city engineer there, and he wrote a letter telling us support for what we should be doing, and I think that was included in your package. And also, we, we have these standard conditions that we follow pretty closely. And the Department of Public Works does an excellent job on, you know, following up, meeting with them, following up on them. And the other thing is, this is strictly a non-residential area. I mean, there's not a house within bird's eye of, of that. So all these things, ordinarily, I wouldn't, you know, move this quickly on it, but all those factors entering in, the support of the Department of Public Works, the city engineer, the location of it, and that National Grid in Verizon, actually, they wanna get working on that. So do we wanna vote on for a suspension first, Mr. President?
You wanna request a suspension?
Yeah, I would request that we suspend the rules, that we can take up this particular order.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, suspension is approved. Counsel Landers.
Okay, and the motion is petition from Mass Electric and Verizon to install two poles, P6-51, P6-5 on Bartlett Street.
Motion made and seconded to approve order 211008454 for the two poles on Bartlett Street with the conditions as noted by the city engineer. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Do we have a copy of the conditions in the packet or somewhere here? Just my own curiosity.
They're on his...
They are on there.
I think everybody got, everybody got...
Okay, should, okay. Should we have the...
Like them, right?
Yes. City Clerk read them?
If I could ask the clerk to be so kind as to read.
Thank you very much. I found it. Just putting... Standard conditions, which there are 11 standard conditions out there. Council wants me to read all of those. New pole 65, excuse me, shall not be located in the sidewalk, and the proposed location of the new pole shall be marked on the ground and approved prior to the start of work. And then there are 11 standard conditions issued by the Engineering Division as part of the road in England. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? On the motion to approve the order to install the two poles, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved. Thanks, Mike. Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on December 13th, 2021. We had two items that evening on the agenda. First one was order number 21-100-8449, communication from Mayor Vigian together with proposed ordinance, City Code Chapter 608, Water Section 11, entrance fees, and Chapter 510 Sewer Section 4, building sewer connections to increase both water and sewer entrance fees based on significant demand on the system. City Engineer De Persio addressed the counselors regarding the revised fees, which is based on significant demands on the city, and will put the sewer connection and water entrance fees in range of other comparable communities. On a motion by Counsel Orem, seconded by the Chair, the Committee voted to recommend approval of the revised fees in Chapter 608 Water and Chapter 510 Sewer, submitted by the mayor, the vote carried five to zero. Next item that evening was order number 21-100-8468, that the Finance Committee review Condition Number 6 and Number 7 in Order Number 19-100-7762B, the Green District Housing, to determine the fund where the payments will, shall be deposited, and forwarded the information to the mayor and auditor to, to establish the account and submit transfers from FY2022 undesignated account into the account designated by the city council. Councillors reviewed the order submitted by Counsel Roby and Counsel Ossing, requesting the city council to determine where the funds should be deposited from Condition 6 and 7 in Order Number 19-100-7762B, the Green District Housing. The city received the, received Site 1 portion of the Condition 6, $600,000, and Site 1 port, portion of Condition 7, $822,500, and these funds are currently in FY2022 undesignated fund account. On a motion by Counsel Orem, seconded by the Chair, is hereby ordered that the mayor submit for city council approval of the establishment of the West Side Fire Station Stabilization Account together with a transfer in the amount of $1,422,500 from the undesignated fund account to the West Fire Station Stabilization Account. Motion carried five to zero. The meeting adjourned at 7:36 PM, Mr. President, and I will be asking for two suspensions this evening.
Okay, we'll start with the first order?
Yes, Mr. President, the first order.
Okay. Finance Chair would like to have a suspension of rules for the first order advertised. All those in favor of the suspension? Suspension is approved. You want motion advertised?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to advertise order number 21-100-8449, please.
Motion's made and seconded to advertise the orders, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, order is advertised, or will be advertised. Thank you, sir. You requesting a suspension for the second one?
Absolutely, Mr. President. Next one, order number 21-100-8468.
Finance Chair is asking for a suspension for order number 8468. All those in favor of the suspension? Suspension is approved. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion, motion to approve the transfer in order number 21-100-8468, that will order that the mayor submit for the city council approval of the establishment of the West Side Fire Station Stabilization Account together with the transfer of $1,422,500 from undesignated fund account to the West Side Fire Station Stabilization Account, please.
Motion made and seconded to support the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which is to set up the West Side Fire Station account and transfer money from undesignated funds into that account. Any discussion on the motion? Is all set, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11-0. Do you have any items?
Yeah, thank you. One more, Mr. President. Motion, I would like to carry over order number 21-100-8402A and B, carry over to the next legislative year, please.
Motion made and seconded to carry over order number 8402A and B. Discussion. Counsel Orem.
If we can know what that order is related to, just, what's that order related to?
That order, thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Orem, that order is related to the acquisition of 100 Log Drive, and it came down from the mayor to the amendment of where the funds would be actually taken from undesignated fund to the land acquisition. Yep.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that order is carried over, 11-0. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the items that I already moved to get carried over, I have the following to also be held over to the next legislative term. Order number 21108046, which is the petition to operate a 24-hour gas station at 431 Lincoln Street. 21108404, the development agreement, oh, I guess I already covered that one. And 21108450, the mayor's proposed amendment to the code zoning 17, 18, and 32 relative to marijuana. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to carry over orders 8406, which is the 24-hour Shell Station operation, and 8450, which is the marijuana zoning changing authorization to the 2022-2023 legislative session. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11-0. Before we adjourn, all right, a quick note and then a little award that we're gonna present. So just remind, so this is the end of the legislative session for 2020-2021. Had a good year-ish, handled it very well, some very challenges that no other council has done, so thank you very much. But just wanna mention to the folks that are listening, on Monday, January 3rd, at 10 o'clock, will be the inauguration day, all right? That's open to the public, it's at the Memorial of Wickercombe School off of Union Street. That's at 10 o'clock, followed by the inauguration meeting, inauguration is there, then we have the meeting to elect a president, vice president, approve the rules for the next legislative session. So that's just a public service announcement. If I could, I would like to ask Counsel Tanara. No one second that, please.
All in favor?
We'll give you, we'll give you that opportunity. Come on up here, you fellow.
Hey, so at this time of the year, it's always, you know, it's a little mixed with some, you know, anticipation of what's coming, and then, you know, some of the folks won't be here with us. So we have an award for Counsel Tanara in grateful recognition of Robert, Rob Tanara, Ward 4 City Council, Marlboro City Council, 2010 to 2021, 11-year run. Well done, Counsel Tanara. In recognition, in recognition of his commitment to the elected office of City Council, Chair of Legislative and Legal Affairs Committee, and longstanding Chair Personnel Committee, members of the city council join the citizens of Marlboro in wishing Counsel Tanara success in all future endeavors, and gratefully acknowledge his admirable service to the city of Marlboro as a city council of Ward 4, and especially for his dedication to the residents of Ward 4, and moreover, to all the citizens of this great city. Signed under my hand and seal in Council Chamber, City Hall, Marlboro, Massachusetts, on this 20th day of December, Michael H. Ossing, President.
Rob, it's been a pleasure, but great job.
Thank you, President. Well, I sat down in front of my computer today, and I was gonna write something out, and I'm like, I can't write something out, I'm really not good at writing, first of all. But I was like, how, how do you put emotions into a piece of paper? I just couldn't do it. So I just wanna say thank you to all. You all impressed me so much. I'm just proud to be a member, member of this city council with you, you know, you know, it's just, I'm impressed. Every time I walk in, you guys do a great job. Steve, your office, run like clockwork, and thank you for your support. Thank you for the support of the President. Kept me on task, you know, with little updates every week, so I do appreciate you. The mayor, the mayor was available to me. A phone call away, I could call him up, and if he didn't answer, he answered me, he'd call me right back. It was just amazing. And it wouldn't be right if I didn't thank Karen, our city council secretary, I get emotional here, but she's been a dream, keep me out of trouble, for the most part, get myself into trouble. But I thank you so much. Phone calls happening all the time, and you just, you were there, you were kinda correcting my steps, so I do appreciate you. And hopefully, you know, things go well. But anyways, and I first wanna thank my family. Mum and dad were always out there with the signs, and my new wife, she was holding signs the first, our first year when I got elected. So she was out there with a trooper. It was like 90 degrees out, and she was out there holding the sign, it was crazy. But we got through it. But, and to all the fellow counselors that aren't here anymore, Joe Delano, Trish Pope, when I, when I was a rookie, she sat right next to me, and she, she was like, hey, Rob, you know, stand up, you know? So, you know, up to her and all the other counselors, too many to name, but President Clancy, he was great help to me as well, so. But thank you all, it's been a pleasure, and I can't say enough, thank you. But thank you all, it's been a pleasure, and I can't say enough, thank you.
If I could ask Counsel Tenera to come up for one last duty.
Wow, this is nice up here. I'll entertain a motion to do, I don't know, what do you want to do?
Move to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn, I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
All right, I think we have 11-0. We are adjourned at 9:51.